Well, good afternoon, folks. It's now Tuesday, December the 2nd, 2014. Here at 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. I now call the regular City Council meeting to order. I'd like to call upon our Pastor Lynn Ward, President of the Ministerial Alliance, to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Councilperson Rose Myers. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we have celebrated Thanksgiving, and we are truly thankful for all your many blessings, for health and strength, family and friends, and the freedoms of living in this great country. And now, Lord, as we enter the Advent season and the approach of rejoicing at the birth of your Son, the Lord Jesus, we also understand that he is our greatest gift of all. We thank you especially tonight for our City Council, our local government officials, and pray for them as they conduct their business this evening. We ask for your wisdom, for discernment, for your guidance, that they may make wise decisions for the best interests of our community. We thank you for their service and for the work that they do to guide our local government. And, Father, we ask your blessings upon each thing that's done. We ask that we may represent you well wherever we are. We ask it in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Well, normally, at this time, we would have the citizens' participation, which is the City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are matters of consideration, or that are not matters of consideration, listed on the posted agenda during this citizens' participation. But since tonight, we have nobody that has signed up for citizens' participation, we will move on down to the consent agenda. The first item being, consider approving the council meeting minutes of November 18th, 2014, and the bond workshop and November 18th, 2014, regular meeting. Also, consider approving the closure of one block of Bridge Street between Houston and Crockett, and one block of Crockett Street between Pearl and Bridge from 6:30 PM Thursday, December 11th, to 11:59 PM Saturday, December the 13th, for the Granbury Living Christmas Cards event presented by the Lakeside Baptist Church. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes and the bond workshop. Are there any discussion or amendments to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. Street closure also. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. The first one being, a public hearing and consider approving a request of Richard Bates of the final plat, a 2.238 acre tract of the Robert Merritt survey abstract number 355, as lot 1 of the Cardinal Ridge addition. This property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of East Highway 377 and Highway 4. I'd like to call upon Scott Sobchek to give us a little more information on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, Mr. City Manager, what we have is a request to final plat the third and final lot of a plat that we saw as a preliminary in this particular development. This particular lot is located just to the west of the new auto zone that's planted. It's the final lot. It's in the lower part of the basin. The final plat application is consistent with the preliminary plat that was submitted. All the variances to support and sustain this particular lot were processed as a part of the preliminary plat application. I can tell you, the only infrastructure that's involved in this particular portion of the lot is a water line that costs with the fire hydrants less than $25,000. Our subdivision ordinance provides a mechanism by, if the public infrastructure is less than $25,000, it can be staff-approved. So the public works, myself, have approved that. You can see the location generally of the line. That's the extension of the water line with the general location of the fire hydrants. The particular building will be situated just to the north of the lot, generally where the abstract information is. The last site plan that I saw was basically a shell building with three retail suites in it. One may or may not have a drive-through window, but we don't know at this point in time which, or if any business franchises is coming to this particular location. All I know is basically, it's a retail pad site for two to three suites which could be located in this location. Our city engineer has no further comment on this. Both P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item. Tonight, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion or concerns on this item that you want to direct to Scott?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Scott, so it's similar like it's going to be a little strip center with three offices in it, is that what you're saying?
Uh, not a three shell spaces for possibly retail-type businesses and retail. It's zone-heavy commercial, so what we can expect is anything from general retail, dry goods, restaurant can go there by right, restaurant with a drive-in, maybe Bill can shed some light on it.
May I speak?
Sure.
Please. I'm Bill Baird with Baird Hampton &amp; Brown. This is going to be developed as a shell building, and no leases have been signed. There's been a lot of interest from potential retailers, but it will probably be between three and six individual retailers. We do think the most easterly, most section will have a drive-through. Don't know yet what it will be.
How big is the building going to be?
It's about 14,000 square feet total.
And it'll have private coming?
It's an L-shaped building that fronts both FM 4 and 377.
377.
Excuse me for interrupting you.
Council, any more discussions for Mr. Baird? Or Scott? Thank you. Counselors, no further questions. I will now entertain a motion to approve of the final plat as requested by the applicant and reviewed by the Development Review Committee.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Council, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That request is approved. The next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of B.S. Equipment Rentals LLC to replat lots Q-1, Q-2, and Q-3 of the Granbury Industrial Park as lots Q-R2R1 of the Granbury Industrial Park. The property is located on the northwest, in the southwest corner of the intersection of Industrial Avenue and Acton Circle. Scott, can you give us more detail on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can see the proposed lots that are bounded in yellow, itemized, and the current property boundary in black. You can see one of the property lines actually bisects a building, which can hamper any future title work. So the intent of this is to combine those three lots that are shown in black into one lot of record bounded, or defined by the yellow lot. As a part of this application, we have variances associated with this particular proposal. We have a variance to 3945 regarding water and sewer and extending our eight-inch main requirement through Industrial Avenue and Acton Circle. We have a variance to 31E not to approve Industrial and Acton Circle. We did get the necessary right-of-way dedication along Acton Circle, which is half of the difference. We have a variance to 36A regarding commercial sidewalks, and we have a variance to the streetlight standards, too. I can tell you, on the first three of those, the water, the sewer, the streets, and the sidewalks, the developer noted DRC's comments and put a note on the plat stating at such time, they'll be made present and available. They'll extend it to and through at their cost. The last of those variances, the streetlight, we had our fire inspector and our engineer do a site visit, and the fire inspector looked at the illumination about the site, was confident that there was enough illumination provided on the site warrant granting the variances. So the city staff and your city engineer and P&amp;Z are all recommending approval of the variances, noting that we have all the necessary notes for the infrastructure to meet the to-and-through requirements once they're made available, and approval of the plat as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any discussion or questions for Scott?
Mayor, I have one.
Councilman Allen.
This kind of industrial area out there anyway, Scott, but is there any fence requirement for that or not?
Any fencing? Uh, no, sir. Our fencing standard is fencing to protect against the more protected single-family residential from commercial or industrial. And they're in a PD, and they're adjoining interim holding heavy commercial and industrial, and none of that's required by our zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Council, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve of the plat as requested by the applicant, along with the variance, Section 3.9 and 4.5, variance 3.1, and variance 3.68.4, and also variance 4.8, as reviewed by the Development Review Committee.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Meyer.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That request is approved. Our next item is a public hearing. It is the first public hearing of an involuntary annexation of approximately 1,175.773 acres of land collectively located generally along the new northeast loop, 567, west of Lake Granbury and east of the existing city limits. And as I said, folks, there's a, this is the first public hearing. We will have another public hearing at noon on Thursday, and it will be also up here, where you'll have an opportunity to ask additional questions, or if folks aren't here, then they can be there at that time. We are required to have these two public hearings. I'm going to let Scott kick this off at this point, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to give you a little history, the city staff and the council adopted a resolution, city staff presented, and the council adopted a resolution regarding the consideration of the annex, involuntary annexation of the area that's bounded in green. They also directed staff to begin work on a service plan and a draft ordinance to support this particular annexation. That resolution was adopted on November 4th, 2014. Based on that directive, staff commenced to go to work on the publications, the notices to all the franchise agencies, as well as get to work on the draft ordinance and the service plan. It was published in the newspaper, and notices were sent in accordance with Chapter 43 of the Local Government Code. In essence, what we're looking at is the area that comprises that portion of property between the city and the lake, also bringing in the northeast loop that was, that's been online for some time now. As a part of the service plan, I can tell you, the service plan was fashioned in a manner to note the rule, undeveloped property that exists currently. Chapter 43 also provides a provision where if a property owner holds an ag exemption on their property, the city can come forward to that property owner with a development agreement to not annex the property at this time, as long as that property remains in its rural state, they maintain their ag exemption, and they don't subdivide and develop at such time. They do undertake those activities. The property is noted in the agreement, triggers what is a voluntary annexation request, and the city can come in and annex the property, and then the property is then developed under the city codes and is brought in, rezoned, and it's developed under the codes like it would be within the city limits. I can tell you the term of the draft agreements that were sent out to all the adjoining property or the affected property owners is for five years. The service plan, back on the ag-exempt areas, this is a map that shows all that property that's noted in green as, when we did the research, those properties that hold ag-exempt status by the appraisal district. So you can see a great amount of property spatially, percentage-wise, is ag-exempt. So in the hypothetical situation, if everybody processed their ag-exempt area, you can see only that area that's noted as the loop right-of-way, and the area that's gray would be brought in. If everybody filed their development agreement and filed their ag exemption status that they get from the appraisal district and development agreement, and we execute those, this is the, this is what the city would look like in essence, once it was annexed. It would be the gray area only, and those areas that are noted as green have the opportunity to basically withhold their area outside the city if they process it for a term of five years. A bit on the service plan, since you can see, this is, this is one of my, I call this as-you-can plainly see map. As you can plainly see, it's rule and nature. A lot of this property is supported by water well septic. There's a provision in the Local Government Code that basically says in the service plan, municipalities are obligated to provide services for areas of light topography, land use, and density. So the service plan is written in a manner to basically note the rule nature of what's going on here. The service plan proposes that those soft surfaces, police, solid ways, code enforcement will be immediate upon annexation. Those hard surfaces, water, sewer, will not be provided by the city due to the fact that this is rule and nature, and what is being proposed here is that if a developer or a property owner starts to develop this property, then they'll basically develop it in accordance with our adopted codes, codes hopefully being brought in to the city limit, zoned appropriately, and develop under our subdivision zoning ordinance and building codes. So that's it in a nutshell. You can see the rural state of the property that's being brought in. The only other thing that I want to put on the table is, we talked a little bit about the rural truck route, the bypass route, which is an important factor right now. Without the loop being in the city, our police department has a tough time enforcing a commercial bypass truck route. So once this loop is in the city, we can coordinate with Tax dot, we can do the appropriate signage, and we actually have a meaningful route around the downtown square to get those through commercial truck trips like rock haulers, water well driller haulers, that have no delivery intent to the downtown businesses, to make sure that they use the commercial bypass route and get them out of the square. I can tell you that I drafted up that ordinance actually this morning, gave a copy to the police chief, and if the council votes in the affirmative to approve the adoption ordinance of this annexed area, which is on the first meeting of January, city staff will dovetail the execution of that truck route amendment along that same agenda as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Scott. I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open it up to the public and let, if anybody in the public has questions that they want to address to Scott or possibly anybody on the staff here. No questions? Well, I'll open it up to the council then. Council, you have any questions or concerns for Scott?
Uh, Scott, so you're saying there's a five-year development agreement in which they would be automatically continued as ag exemption?
So the way the development agreement is fashioned currently is, once it's executed, it's good for a term of five years. Upon, after the expiration of that term, the city would have the ability to bring them into the city at that time. Now, if I fall short of my mark, Mr. City Attorney, help me out here.
So, but that would take another positive action from the city to annex it in the five, at the end of five years?
Yes.
That's how it's written now, yes. But it also has a trigger that if they sell the property to a developer for development purposes, that it becomes into the city at that point.
Comes into the city. Could you, Scott, I know you don't work for the county, but could you tell me a little bit about what the county does and how that works, and what their, what the homeowner's issues would be with the county?
Sure. Uh, just as, the county has adopted a set of development regulations, and working with the county, because they're a part of our DRC review process, you become somewhat aware of them. I don't want to speak for the county, but to my knowledge, development regulations under the county standards are, if you have central water, it's a two-acre gross threshold in order to have a develop, developable lot. If you have a water well in a septic, you have neither central water nor central sewer, it's a three-acre gross requirement. The interesting thing about this particular piece of property, though, it is in our ETJ. So we have a mutual agreement with the county, between the city and the county, saying outside of the corporate boundary, but within the city's ETJ, whose design standards prevail. And in this particular area, it's still our subdivision regulations that prevail. So county standards, for example, the two or three-acre threshold would yield to our subdivision ordinance, and if, for example, this wasn't brought into the city, and say somebody came in and there's a tax ID number just on the northeastern reach, tax ID number 43271, if they came in and subdivided that, they would have to adhere to our subdivision ordinance standards and go through our process. Now, they can request variances to the city standards and develop under the county standards, which we've seen often, to say, we have a water line that's 3,500 lineal feet away, and a sewer line is 4,700 lineal feet away. It's not proportionate to develop 10 lots and bring the water and sewer, and we're requesting a way or two to the city standards and develop under the county standards. But still, the first bite of the apple is the city subdivision ordinance, and the city council has the latitude to yield those based on a situational condition or the topography and the available infrastructure that exists, and grant, and allow them to process to county standards.
Scott, I got a question on, and I know there's a lot of wells out there. Are any of those wells, would any of those wells be grandfathered where the person could actually retain, say, for irrigation purposes or whatever, once they do, go to the city?
And that's noted in the service plan. Basically, there's a notation that says, we understand that there's existing wells and septic systems, and that the city is proposing that the property being annexed be maintained on those existing wells and septic systems until such time it develops, and then basically the consideration of available central water and sewer comes into play at that time. But as long as those wells and septic systems are operating in accordance with TCQ and local standards, then the city should be fine with them. Now, if a septic system fails, for example, then our designated representative, which is Alva, has the latitude to go out there and assess it and correct that failure.
We currently have sewer and water all the way up 51, right across the river, across the bridge, over to Abe's Landing. Do we have any water and sewer across the railroad tracks on 567 or not?
No, sir.
So, but, so then the other access would be possibly off of Reunion Boulevard or up through there, where we have water up and through there?
And interesting, yeah, the nearest street was Moore Street, and we, interestingly, we had a plat application, if you recall, a preliminary plat application, and we talked about the sewer being available, but daylighting with minimal cover. And he was requesting a variance not to extend it because we didn't have adequate cover to extend it. So there, there'll be, in order to extend it on Moore Street at least, there'll be some capital expense in order to get the necessary cover to gravity flow it and provide pump stations.
And we will be working on that in the next five years.
That, yeah, that's part of, hopefully, Alva and his master plan for water and sewer.
So potentially, a homeowner in, or a landowner in here, under county standards, if we acquiesce to those, would be one house per two to three acres? Under the city development plan, what would be the densities allowed, all the way up to multifamily or, depending on how we ordinance this?
This is a key issue because of what you do in that instance, is you yield to a comprehensive plan. We're actually going through undertaking a comprehensive plan revisitation at this time, so the first glance across the room is, what does the comprehensive plan say? Is earmarked for this land use-wise, and a lot of this land is earmarked for medium, low to medium-density residential. Now, certainly, the city has the latitude to look at some of these nodes where the roads connect, for example, 51 in the loop and Reunion or Moore Street in the loop, and say there may be a good spot there for neighborhood service node or something like that. But outside of that, I can tell you, the current plan has it earmarked for residential.
Scott, I have a question.
Councilperson Meyer.
My question is in regards to the large rock haulers and 18-wheelers that I've seen go through downtown, the downtown square. So you mentioned that by doing this, this would provide them an alternative route where they wouldn't have to go downtown. Is there currently an ordinance where they cannot go downtown?
We, I see the chief back there, but we currently have a truck route ordinance that has been adopted, but I can tell you, the route is not effectively signed, at least from my perspective. And the chief may want to speak on this. And by the mere fact that the northeast portion of the loop is not in the city, we really don't have a good way to manage and regulate going around downtown. So you can see, if somebody comes on Business 377, which is part of the truck route, the only way to get to Highway 51 is to actually come through downtown because we don't regulate the northeast loop. But bringing this, bringing this piece in, we'll put it under municipal jurisdiction, and then once, hypothetically, again, if the council adopts the new truck route ordinance, we'll take that immediately to Tax dot to say, work with us, get the proper signage in place. Now it's in the city, and then we'll get the through truck movements out of the square area. But part of the key is, again, the chief may want to come up here, part of the key is to have it appropriately signed before you get to those intersecting streets. And we talked a little bit about that this morning. You know, probably about an eighth of a mile or a quarter of a mile before you get to the intersection, sign it, "commercial truck route ahead," and then at the intersection, direct them which way to go, and then have the enforceable sign in place.
That, I mean, that's where I typically see them, when I'm sitting in Verena's, looking out the window, and here comes a big 18-wheeler.
Yeah.
And I just think, gosh, if they lost control, they'd be in the restaurant. So that would be great if we could get them out of downtown.
Well, that east, that east side, getting that designated as a truck route is going to be monumental in keeping that traffic off.
And we will, we've written it in a manner to provide an exemption for people that are clearly making deliveries. So if they have an invoice to say, "I'm delivering to Martin's Office Supply," for example, another area that we're looking at was getting trucks off of Business Pearl Street in front of the high school, for example. I know it's unrelated to the annexation, but that's part of the commercial truck route as well. And if you've been there during peak drop-off time, you don't want rock haulers barreling through there in a school zone. So just like the downtown area, making sure it's appropriately signed and make-
The signage, the signage is huge, but even more than that is going to be when we sit down with the Tax dot representative and actually go over the ordinance with him, so that they, they can have that in their system when these companies ask for a route, a truck route for their drivers to come in, that they have the information of where they need to go. Because we run into it where they've been given a- Because we, we've run into it where they've been given a, a, uh, okay route, uh, in their plan to come right through downtown when it clearly, the sign clearly states that they take the loop if they're coming in from the north. So we, we've run into that a little bit. So we're, getting the east loop done is going to help us tremendously, but also sitting down with Tax Dot and showing, uh, them the added of the east loop and the, the change that we're making to, uh, West Pearl, uh, as well, is going to help tremendously.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Chief or Scott over there? Like I say, folks, this was the first of two, and, uh, we'll have another one on, uh, Thursday at noon in the council chambers here, so, um, you're, you're welcome to attend that one also. Scott, you got something else?
Yes. I do want to mention for the public, we have large-scale printouts of the maps that was done, accomplished by the surveyor in the back on the table, so if the public wants to look at the large-scale maps, they'll more than love them too, yes.
Okay. So if you haven't got those, that stuff, it's available to you back there. Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granberry City Council is convening an open session and that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, airport condemnation. Shall return.